It's a good idea. I mean, it's... It is. I like it initially, just to look at stuff and have the tabs. But then after that, it's just... I think it is. I keep a minute with things that maybe I'm going to say because you're not always back. I think we've figured a long time.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Haltum City Council. If you will, I'll ask you to stand at this time for the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag. Our Father, we thank you for this season of the year, not only throughout the world, but especially here in Haltum City. We thank you for this time of families being together, of giving and receiving of gifts, and of counting our blessings at the end of the year. We ask your blessings on our citizens as they enjoy this season of the year. May they be kept safe as they travel, and may the abundance and the generosity of the season be experienced in each home and business in our city. Bless this council as we come here tonight for the final council meeting in 2004. Give us wisdom as we look at the issues that are on the agenda, as we discuss and deliberate and decide regarding the subjects at hand. In your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to begin the meeting tonight by calling attention to the fact that this will be our last meeting in 2004, and we're just a few days away from Christmas. And I want to, as the mayor of Haltum City, extend to our citizens' best wishes for a happy holiday season, for a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year to all of our citizens, all of our businesses, all of the people connected with Haltum City. And I'd like to give the members of the council an opportunity, if you'd like, to extend your greetings to the people of Haltum City. So this time we'll go in order from position one through seven. So council member Sutton?
Well, that says it all. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I wish the best to you and your family this year, and we thank you for all that you've done to make Haltum City the place it is, and appreciate, recognize that we couple together with you to do what we do. So, thank you. Happy... Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Just to keep it short, I hope everyone has a safe and happy holiday. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. Thanks.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas and a safe, happy holiday. I just think it's a blessing to live in Haltum City, and the citizens are great folks, and I just wish y'all a togetherness with your families this year, and a very safe and happy and blessed New Year, too. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I hope to see each one of you here the second Monday in January.
The first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation, a certificate of appreciation to beautification chair, Betty Porter. Betty, if you'll join me at the podium, please. To the citizens of Haltum City, I want to tell you, this is a very special lady standing here tonight to receive this certificate of appreciation. She's special because she has dedicated years of service to Haltum City, and even though she has chosen to resign from the beautification board, she's not resigning from volunteering in Haltum City. And when I make this presentation, just a moment, we'll give her a chance to speak, and we'll give her an opportunity to tell us what you're going to be doing in the future. Our public information officer gave me a list of things about Betty Porter, and you can see, it's almost a full page. And I'm not going to read all of those, but I do want to call your attention to some of them. Betty started serving, I believe, according to the proclamation in 1991, so that's 13 years of service to the beautification board. And you've done a lot of other things, too, in the city, and a few of those. She continues to care for two adoptive spots. She coordinates activities for the Birdville Historical Society in an attempt to preserve local history. She's done a lot of things. She's worked in 20-degree weather in January, as well as 100-degree weather in July, doing whatever was required, picking up trash, doing other things to help improve Haltum City. She's mowed the front yard of City Hall on numerous occasions using her own equipment. She's mulched and cleaned public areas all over Haltum City, including flower beds and city and state medians. And the things that have been accomplished by the beautification board while Betty has been a member of it is just a long list. Three national awards for Keep America Beautiful, two state awards for Keep Texas Beautiful, completion of a cost-sharing landscape on Denton Highway. A long list, and I'm just going to leave that up here. If you'd like to take a look at it to see what this lady has done, I'd like for you to do that. But Betty, thank you very much for all you have done, and it's with pleasure I present this certificate of appreciation tonight. Whereas the city of Haltum City in 1984 issued a challenge to its residents and businesses to participate in a cleanup and beautification campaign, and whereas those who have served as members of the beautification board and have accepted that challenge by setting an example for others to follow, leading community cleanup days, assisting Birdville ISD with environmental education programs, working with businesses to keep their properties clean, and the sponsoring of public events to raise environmental awareness, and whereas Betty Porter has been dedicated to this cause since 1991, since she first began volunteering her time and her talents to assure that these programs succeed. And whereas, upon her leaving the board to pursue other volunteer interests, the city of Haltum City would like to recognize her efforts and publicly thank her for her leadership, her insight, and her dedication to making Haltum City a better and a more beautiful place to live. Now, I therefore, Calvin White, Mayor of Haltum City, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize Betty Porter as an outstanding Haltum City citizen, and do hereby thank her for all she has done for this community. So join me in your applause for Betty Porter.
Thank you.
And we do want Betty to make some comments. Tell us what you're going to be doing from here on out, and anything else you'd like to share.
Okay. I am not going to quit volunteering. I am going to continue with the Historical Society. Most of you have heard of our Historical Society, but there's a lot of things that I have been wanting to do with that organization that time has not allowed, and I regret having to give up the beautification board, but you can't do everything. And I appreciate what you guys do on the council. I love Haltum City, and I've only been here since 1966, but there are a lot of people that have been here all their lives, and they love it equally. So, please, continue your job, do a good job, and I trust the council will make decisions for the benefit of Haltum City. So, thank you for what you do, and I'm going to continue what I'm doing. So, thanks for allowing me to volunteer for Haltum City for so long. I love it.
Thank you, Betty. One thing I failed to mention earlier is that council member Kim Reese is not with us tonight. She is ill. We regret she's not able to be here, but we wish her well in her recovery. We come now to the announcements and the events, and we have a couple of people to make announcements. First of all, our public information officer, Fran Burns.
Thank you, Mayor. I have quite a few things to talk about this evening, what with Christmas being such a busy time. Reminder to everyone that the Gary Hire's Memorial Toy Drive continues until December 22nd, and this is the first time the police department has tried a toy drive and then turn around and give the toys out to people in need, and they've received a whole lot more requests for those in need than they had toys. So if you can afford to drop off a toy at the police department, they would certainly appreciate it very much. And then, of course, our wish list trees at the library and at the Nancy P. Watkins Animal Care and Adoption Center, and this is for people who are interested in helping support the animals and the care of the animals at the adoption center. And there are trees, as I say, at the library and at the animal control center, and people can pick up from the list of items and then return with the item later on. So, that continues up until December 22nd as well. This week, Thursday, at the library, a Truly Texas Christmas will take place, and this is the annual Storytime for children at the library at 6:30 PM. Craft stories, refreshments, and a puppet show will be offered, and jammies are optional, but encouraged, and it's free and open to children of all ages. The annual Christmas dinner for Haltum City seniors is this Saturday, December 18th, at the Christian Center of Fort Worth. That's at 4301 Northeast 28th Street in Haltum City. Service begins at 11:00 AM and ends at 1:00 PM. Bounders are needed to serve and deliver food as well as clean up afterwards, and drivers are needed to deliver meals to shut-ins. Those needing a meal delivered should call the police department at 222-7000 or the senior center at 834-9036. And if you'd like to volunteer, please call the senior center. They'd love to hear from you. Also, the Christian Center itself is sponsoring a free Christmas Day dinner. That is, they'll be giving away a Christmas dinner to people that don't have anything or anywhere to go on Christmas, and that's 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on the 25th. And they're also collecting groceries, coats, and blankets to give away, so if you can help them, their number's 834-5595. Other programs that have taken place include Dickens on Broadway. It was a tremendous success, and we thank everyone who helped. Approximately 600 people attended. It's sponsored by Keep Haltum City Beautiful, and it couldn't have happened if it were not for the many city departments, volunteers, Haltum High School groups, elementary school groups, council members, individuals, church members, and other staff who helped. There are just too many people to mention, and I know if I tried, I'd leave somebody out, but thank you, everybody, who came out and enjoyed the event and also helped with the event. The Tour of Lights, this took place over this past weekend. That's something that's sponsored by the TE, the Fort Worth Transportation Authority, and many don't realize it, but over the past several years, Haltum City has been on the tour. People that get on the buses actually ride through Haltum City and look at our beautiful neighborhoods. For the past three years, they've stopped at City Hall. They've come through our parking lot, and volunteers have boarded the bus, people who play Santa and Mrs. Claus, voluntary singers. Someone plays Ben the Bear, our mascot for Keep Haltum City Beautiful. And this year, we gave away 1,500 candy canes, so we know that we saw 1,500 people come through Haltum City. So it's a really good program to get people to actually come here and see our beautiful decorations. And the credit for organizing this goes to Birdie Blocker, who coordinated all the volunteers and worked with the TE. So, thank you to her very much, and thanks to all of those who gave away their a couple hours Saturday evening and Sunday evening during this very busy time. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is the Neighborhood Decorating Contest. Again, that's sponsored by the beautification board and has been since 1986. And this year, we just got the results back today, and the city's divided into six different sections, and individual awards are awarded in each section. And so, if I could just read the addresses of the people who won in each section. Section one is the very southern part of town, from Midway to the southern border. The winners are on Parish Road, 4404, and 3216 Haltum Road. Section two, which is Broadway to Midway, that section there is on Earl Drive, 3273, on Walthall, 5112, and at 3217 Jean Lane. And section three, which is Broadway going north to Stanley Keller, Dale Clark won on 3208 Haltum Road. There's a winner at 5224 Vicki Street, and there's a winner on Stanley Keller Road at 4913. And section four, which is 820 to Western Center Boulevard, there's a winner on Christie Street at 5701, Western Creek Court at 5017, and Fall Creek Court at 5763. All of these addresses are listed on a sheet of paper on the podium outside, if anybody wants to pick one up and go look at these decorations. And I just have a few more. Starlight Drive in section five, which is Diamond Oaks, and anybody who goes through Diamond Oaks can just about, it's like your eyes bug out, I mean, there's just so many decorations. There's a winner at Starlight Drive at 4405, Emerald Oaks Drive at 3921, and at Starlight Court at 5812. And then the last section is section six, and that is Stanley Keller North to 820 West of 377. We have a winner at 4936 Tracy, 4121 Field, and at 5708 Marlene Drive. And again, if you would like to pick up this list, it's just on the podium outside. And I am very appreciative of the judges who went around. This is a lot of work to judge this contest because there's so much out there, but these are all students from Haltum High School, and they're members of the student council. I'll see if I can pronounce their names correctly. Afrin Assad, Maeson Chanthafi, Elizabeth Stevens, Jessica Biggs, Ruby Matthews, Amanda Thompson, Lauren Muir, Cameron Johnson, and Colin Johnson. So, thank you to every... Congratulations to the winner, and thank you to the volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
Fran, before you leave, those are a lot of announcements.
I know, I'm sorry.
And, no, 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 don't be sorry. It's a good thing to have. I just wanted to point out, most of those announcements are going to be on our website and on our cable channel. Is that right? All those things are going to be referenced there. So if they didn't write as quickly as she was speaking, that's, don't feel like you're left out, especially to the viewers at home, but there are ways to get that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We do want to encourage all of our citizens to take some time the next week or so at night, get out, drive around, and look at all the beautiful lights. They are lovely, and maybe that'll... If you're not already in the Christmas spirit, maybe that will help. So get out and take a look at the finished product of all the handiwork of our citizens with their holiday lights. Council member Sutton, you have an announcement.
Yes. All of us can share in a special treat tonight only. There is a gemini meteor shower going on right now from dusk till the wee hours of the morning. What they tell me is that there's 60 to 80 geminis per hour, which is meteor showers per hour, and after 10 o'clock, it may go up to over 100 per hour. So if you step outside tonight, you should be able to see the meteor shower that's going on right now. I just encourage you, if you can brave the cold, to just enjoy what we're going to see in the sky tonight. Oh, there's a website for this, www.spaceweather.com. www.spaceweather.com.
Okay, thank you, council member Sutton. That concludes our announcements and events. We move now to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be self-explanatory, items that are considered to be routine that council feels have satisfactory explanation on. These will be enacted by the council with one motion. We are removing item number seven. So the motion will consist of items one through eight, with item number seven being removed. And then we'll take action on item number seven later. Council member Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we accept the consent agenda with the exception of number seven, which we'll talk on later.
Council member Lanford?
As a second.
Council member Hutchinson?
Same.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If you will register your vote at this time, I will display it. And it passes by unanimous vote. We move now to item number seven. Mr. Muir, if you will, introduce this item for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, during the past 18 months, area leaders have served on committees of the North Central Texas Regional Transit Initiative, and have worked cooperatively to develop a plan for creating a seamless regional rail system throughout the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex. This ambitious goal is vital to the continued economic competitiveness of our region and was the focus of over 60 meetings on technical, financial, institutional structure, and legislative issues. These meetings culminated in the Statement of Principles for the Implementation of a Regional Rail System in North Central Texas, and these principles are referenced on the attached resolution that you're going to be voting on tonight. This is resolution number R-2004-034-01. The regional consensus is that the benefits of the proposed new rail services justify seeking direct voter approval of necessary funding. As the new session of the Texas Legislature approaches, area cities have been encouraged to pass resolutions endorsing the Statement of Principles. Upon passage, the attached resolution will be forwarded to the Tarrant Regional Transportation Coalition, of which the city is a founding member, for inclusion in a legislative packet for the funding issues. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Muir from the council? Okay. I'm in line then for a motion regarding item number seven. Council member Lanford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve resolution R-2004-034-01.
Okay, a motion to approve. Council member Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. That's for a second.
Have a motion and a second. Council member Holcomb?
That was the same.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any discussion on the motion? I want to just make one comment regarding this. Haltum City is a major stakeholder in this initiative because of the Cotton Belt Line that runs roughly north, south to north through Haltum City, that will be a major artery for some of the things that are being planned. So for our support to come in early endorsing this concept is a very positive statement on the part of the city, and some good things can be coming to Haltum City as a result of this regional rail system being put in place. So the vote we're about to take tonight will be regarding that issue. Council member Sutton?
Just a real brief comment. I wanted to say that these 10 sections that are part of the principles are just that, principles that are going to start guiding this effort in this area. So if you're studying this issue, if you want to know what's being talked about and articulated, this will, these nine, 10 principles will actually be guiding the discussion. This is what our official response to the rail system in Haltum City is going to be.
Further discussion on the motion. Okay, I'll call for the vote at this time. And it passes by unanimous vote. We come now to the public hearings and ordinance section of the council meeting. We have five public hearings tonight. The first one, item number nine, has to do with revising the 2003-2004 budget. Mr. Muir?
I'm going to start it off with our finance director, Joel Welsh. He'll be giving the staff presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Muir. At the end of the fiscal year, we went through the year-end closeout and identified some expenditures that were not included in the revised budget that we asked the council to adopt a couple of months ago, and there was a subsequent event that we didn't have at the time that came into play in the course of the conclusion of the 2004 fiscal year budget. The city is required to have an ordinance in place appropriating sufficient funds for all of the expenses for the fiscal year, and as such, we have to approach the council and request an ordinance amending the budget to encompass all of these expenditures. And in accordance with the charter and state law, of course, we have to have a public hearing before we can ask the council to consider the ordinance. The items in particular that we are asking the council to consider as part of this ordinance amending the 2004 fiscal budget is about $2 million of items, of which $1,881,000 of it is infrastructure that has been donated to the city, is contributed capital to the city. Donated is not the exact right word for it, but it is the infrastructure, the streets and utilities that were installed at the KB Homes subdivision. And so the city is going to be reflecting, on one hand, a revenue of donated capital and an expenditure, and so we're asking the council to appropriate funds for that action. And then in the course of closing our books for the year, we have to make certain accruals of vacation time, sick leave time, other times like that. And our original estimates of how much this was going to be turned out to be a little bit low, so we're asking for an increase in the general fund budget of about $90,000 for that item. And then finally, we are asking the council to amend the general fund budget for an expenditure of $87,000 that was made to a firm that the city engaged to perform a sales tax audit. And the effect of this sales tax audit was beneficial to the city, in fact, in that $253,000 of sales tax that had been paid to the city of Fort Worth is now going to be paid to the city of Haltum City where it rightfully belongs. So, that is, that's the most material items of the ordinance, and I will answer any questions that you have.
Before I open the public hearing for members of the audience to participate in this item, I'll ask members of the council, any questions or comments for Mr. Welsh? Okay, there being none. Mr. Muir, any comments on your part?
The only comment is probably similar to the one I made a couple of months ago, and we did a similar action, is that this is mainly just a procedural bookkeeping matter. Mr. Welsh, I think he's done a good job explaining it, and the narrative in your packet certainly explained that.
If I may, Mayor, I neglected to mention one thing. Yes, we are asking for an increase in the appropriation of the general fund budget of about $200,000, but I would also mention that in the course of operations of the general fund, that we have increased the fund balance in the general fund by $500,000, even after these expenditures are taken into account.
It didn't... In the fund balance, did I read somewhere it's like 19% now?
Yes, sir.
So we're getting there.
Yes, sir, we're almost to the target that the council's chosen.
One of the things I think that's important for the citizens of Haltum City to be aware of in the report that was just given by Mr. Welsh is it's very difficult sometimes to track where a business is located, and we know where they're located here in Haltum City, but the big computer down in Austin doesn't always know that. So, sales tax gets collected, but it gets credited to the city of Fort Worth, when in reality, it's in the city of Haltum City. And this past year, we were able to find a quarter of a million dollars of money that had been sent to Fort Worth that is rightfully the property of Haltum City. Is that correct?
Not only is that correct, the auditors that we contracted with are still looking, so they may not be finished yet.
So a quarter of a million dollars to the good and still counting, still looking. Okay, so I thought the citizens of Haltum City would like to be sure you're aware of that. Anything by the council before I open the public hearing? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time for members of the audience to make comments, to ask questions regarding this budget revision. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, there being none, I close the public hearing, and I'm ready for a motion regarding the wishes of the council regarding item number nine. Council member Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 0-2004-030-03.
Council member Holcomb?
I'd like a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, if you will, register your vote, and the display shows unanimous vote in favor of. Item number 10 is the first reading on a masonry ordinance. Mr. Muir?
Mr. Pliska is going to take us on this ride.
Thank you, Mr. Muir. Thank you, Mayor, council members, citizens of Haltum City. Tonight at this public hearing, we're looking at amending or modifying the city's masonry ordinance. This will increase the number of masonry corridor areas in the city. These areas will be required to have masonry on new and remodeled construction. In addition, we're increasing the amount of masonry required from 65% to 80% in these corridor areas for new and remodeled construction. corridor areas for new and remodeled construction. After meeting on November 23, 2004, the Planning and Zoning Commission revisited this masonry ordinance and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments as listed in the attached ordinance that you have tonight. However, we need to discuss Sections 2A and 2B and 2E of the ordinance for legal matters that have been brought up by the city attorney, Mr. Wayne Olson. I would like to point out before we get into that, these corridor areas will include from the existing ordinance, Beach Street, that would be all of it, Holtham Road, all of Holtham Road, Denton Highway, all, Airport Freeway, all, Interstate 820, all, Western Center Boulevard, all, Watauga Road, all. Those were the ones listed in the previous ordinance. In the amendment, all of Belknap Street, all of Broadway Avenue, all of Carson, all of Midway and Northeast 28th Street, McLean and Glenview Avenues, Fossil Vista and Fossil Creek Boulevard. And as I stated earlier, the planning and zoning recommended going from 65% masonry in these areas to 80% masonry. We also looked at this as a standalone ordinance and for the council to handle the variances as they will accrue with the passage of this amendment. We also need to look at the non-conforming issues with the passage of this ordinance for existing structures. I believe tonight, we're waiting, again, discussion from the city attorney, Mr. Wayne Olson, on this issue and discussion for council on this ordinance amendment.
Okay, before we get to Mr. Olson's comments, members of the council, any questions for Mr. Pliska? Okay, Mr. Olson, I believe you have some input from the legal department regarding this item.
I have two comments, Mayor. My understanding is that the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation on this ordinance was that any existing non-conforming, non-residential buildings would be allowed to stay that way, but additions to those buildings have to meet the masonry requirements. I've recommended some language that I think more clearly states that any addition to a non-conforming commercial structure would have to meet the masonry requirements. My second issue involves the variance procedures. The changes that are being recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission would allow variance only if compliance with this ordinance would impair the architectural design and creativity of the building. And I just want the council to address whether that is an appropriate variance standard. Again, the example that I use, if you have an existing metal building, an addition is being made to that building, the addition will be required to have masonry. And if somebody believes that that's not appropriate because it's impractical, or cost prohibitive, or it just doesn't accomplish the intent of this ordinance, they would not be able to obtain a variance unless they can show that the ordinance impairs the architectural design and creativity of the building. So I just thought, for discussion purposes, the council needs to decide first whether you want to be the board that grants variances, and if so, under what circumstances do you want to grant variances. Mr. Pliska has passed out the standards that we use for the Board of Adjustment granting variances to the zoning ordinance. And those standards could instead be incorporated into this ordinance. Again, my comment on those variance standards is, they do not allow for a variance just because somebody says it's expensive or not practical. They have to actually show that their building is not similar to other buildings that the masonry requirements might applicable to. They have to show that their situation is unique, not just that it's not practical to comply with the ordinance. So I'll leave that with you to decide how you want to treat these issues. But I do think they need to be addressed just for a matter of clarification. So if the ordinance is adopted, applicants will understand what their rights are.
Members of the council, do you have questions for Mr. Olson before I open the public hearing? Councilmember Lanford?
Mr. Olson, is the specific area that you were talking about, the additions, is that under Section 2B, that second part where it says additions?
That's correct. The last sentence, you're on it right there.
Okay.
It's on page four, the top of page four of the ordinance.
And I believe what we, at least one of the things we discussed in pre-council was, perhaps we could specify a percentage change to the existing building that might invoke a waiver, an appropriate waiver. Is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation. Rather than have everybody come to the council for a variance, I would recommend that you set a minimum guideline that says if you do an addition by more than a blank percentage of the square footage of the existing non-conforming structure, then you have to meet the masonry requirements. If the council already knows that below a certain percentage, it's not reasonable to require masonry, then you ought to just put that in the ordinance. Otherwise, if you want everybody to have to comply unless they can show the hardship that is required to obtain a variance, that would be the way the ordinance is written now. And certainly, you can do that. But I think a percentage is an option for you to consider.
Thank you. And again, as I suggested in pre-council, I'm just going to throw out the number 25% change. Up to 25% would be considered an automatic variance to this requirement, mason requirement. Above that, you'd have to come to the council for some special consideration. Again, I'm just throwing that out as a, there's nothing magic about it. Just if somebody's got some...
If I could comment, Mayor?
Yep.
25% is a good figure. We also use that for variances that go to the zoning board of adjustment concerning zoning issues and non-conforming structures as a result of rezones.
Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Olson, when we were back in pre-council, aside from discussing the percentage that would be included, did we not need to include these six requirements in the ordinance as well, the variance requirements, so that when someone is looking at the ordinance, they can see specifically?
Let me explain in some detail, because it's probably quite confusing. The ordinance, as it's presented to you tonight, requires that in order to obtain a variance, the applicant must show that compliance with the masonry requirements of the ordinance would impair the architectural design and creativity of the building. And, in addition, to grant the variance, the city council must determine that a literal enforcement of the regulations will create an unnecessary hardship or a practical difficulty for the applicant, that the situation causing the unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty is unique to the affected property and is not self-imposed, that the variance or waiver will not injure and will be wholly compatible with the use and permitted development of adjacent properties, and that the granting of the variance or waiver will be in harmony with the spirit and purpose of this ordinance. That's currently what's being proposed to you. What Mr. Pliska has passed out, if I'm understanding correctly, the last page of this handout are the variance standards that currently are applicable to the Board of Adjustment.
That is correct.
Is that correct? And they, some of those are similar to what I just read, but they're not identical, and there are some additional requirements. But under either of those variance requirements, the way they're written, I just want the council to understand, an applicant is not entitled to a variance simply because it's not fair, or it's expensive. The applicant would have to show that their situation is different from everybody else's situation. They have a unique piece of property. That is a standard that has been utilized for zoning variances for years, and it's pretty well been upheld. But I'm just asking the council whether that's the same standard you want to apply to the variances from the masonry requirements. And that's your call.
And one other thing we talked about in pre-council was the fee involved, increasing the fee from 100 to 300.
Thank you. That is correct. This ordinance was previously passed in 1995. Advertisement costs and mailing costs and processing costs were a lot cheaper then, and this ordinance reflects a $100 fee. We would like to ask the council to look at increasing that to $300, which is what we currently charge for any other type of public hearing.
Anything else for the attorney or our planning director before we open the public hearing? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time. This will give members of the audience an opportunity to address the council on this, to ask questions, to make comments, to give their input. Since this is a public hearing, it's not necessary to fill out one of the appearance before the city council cards for you to be able to speak. However, we have had one filled out tonight, and I'll go ahead and begin with that. And then, once that individual has spoken to the council, then anyone in the audience who wishes to do so will be given an opportunity. Mr. John Williams, if you will, come forward at this time and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. John Williams, 4609 Biscayne, Holtham City. Excuse my apparel, I had to come straight from work. First of all, I'd like to know what brought this forward, what initiated changing the ordinance and adding the new streets to it?
At this time, I have approximately four members, new members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they're a new and active group. And several of my members suggested that we review this ordinance.
Okay, appreciate that. The reason I'm asking this, I also know that you're adding some streets to this. I do know that four of the streets that you add into it belong, people that were on the recall, the council members, four of these recall council members own property on the streets that were being added. And I'm sure there's nothing intentional toward that. I was looking at the Holtham City sign up there, there's 10 letters in Holtham City. If you go over to the center of the C coming from the left, that's 65% of that sign. If you had that half the C and the I, that's 80% of the sign. So that little bit is what you're adding to it. So I don't really see what the, what you're going to gain from that and in adding these streets. And another thing I'd like to add to that, we're talking about these major corridors, I guess that's where the streets are coming from. There's commercial property that's off these major corridors, and these properties either front, run along beside, or back up to residential homes. And I think it's unfair for you to make the people that's out on these major corridors to have the extra masonry, when you got the people in here in the city, they're paying the majority part of the tax, and they're having to sit out in their front yard and look at this, and then they're going to be the ones that are reaping not looking. Because if it's 80%, and you go around the building, it's 75% say the building's square, three of the sides can be masonry, if you want to do it that way. Then the back of the building can be just not masonry, and that's probably what's going to face the homeowner. And I also know, I talked to Mr. Pliska, and I talked to Mr. Muir about this, and I read somewhere also that y'all had checked with some cities, surrounding cities. I think South Lake was one of them. I don't know how that one got included in the group, but what all the other cities. Fort Worth, above Holtham City on the south, on the west, and on the north. Am I correct? And Fort Worth has a masonry ordinance?
I would like to mention a study that we did. We did not include South Lake, however. This was, this survey was done by my staff. Keller, North Richardson Hills, Fort Worth, Watauga, and Richland Hills. Fort Worth at this time does not have a masonry ordinance.
How about the rest of them?
They do. Keller requires 80% masonry on all structures. They do allow metal buildings clad with 80% masonry products. North Richardson Hills is requiring 100% masonry and does allow metal buildings with 100% masonry clad material. However, it's very unpopular in North Richardson Hills. Fort Worth, as I said, does not have a masonry ordinance. Watauga requires 80% masonry. Metal buildings are allowed with 80% masonry clad material. And Richland Hills also is an 80% figure in several of their districts.
But not all their districts. Is that right, Mr. Pliska?
Their businesses.
Oh, their businesses. I would suggest, if you're going to do this, that you make it fair and equitable for everybody. If you own a piece of raw land on, say, Belknap Street, and you own a piece of raw land on Low Rain Street, and both of them are commercial property, somebody needs a piece of commercial property, but they don't need the traffic, they can buy the property over on Low Rain Street and build a building cheaper than what they could build the building on Belknap. So that would make the property more marketable on Low Rain. Plus, with the homes that are over on Low Rain, they're the ones that are going to sit there and have to reap looking at what's not, you know, what's not masonry. So I would suggest, if you're going to do this, do it with everything that's commercial, everything in C1, 2, or 3, C5, C4, M1 and M2, and make it fair and equal, instead of picking and choosing streets. Because if you're going to come back and do a variance deal, something's wrong with the process to start with. Either y'all need to do it or not do it. My particular piece of property that I own on 28th Street is 100% masonry in the office. The garage was built later. It sits to the west of it, it's 30 by 30. It's steel. And the question I guess I have for you, Ms. Pliska, I'm wanting to replace that steel garage under this new ordinance, well, it'd have to be 80% masonry.
Repairs are allowed on a non-conforming structure. It was when you change, it's when you change the footprint of the structure and increase the size of it would trigger this.
We're talking about leveling the structure and going back with an identical 30 by 30, but going with a new steel building as opposed to the old steel building that's there.
Again, repairs to an existing structure would be allowed, but to increase the footprint of the structure would trigger the ordinance.
Well, that's not exactly a repair when you level it and build a new, I mean, that's a new facility. You'd see this building, it would be a repair. Yeah. But if I tore it down 30 by 30 and rebuilt 30 by 30...
If you placed a panel at a time, theoretically, he could do it.
Oh, okay.
When he levels the structure, though, it triggers new codes.
Okay, well, I think that was the question that was being asked, and I didn't, okay. If I leveled the building, then I'll have to go back with 80% masonry. Right? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other member of the audience wish to address the council at this time? Okay, Mr. Grzan is over here, and then we have this lady wishing to address the council. If you will, give us your name and address for the record, and pull that mic down a little bit closer, if you would, please. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Patricia Conley. I live at 3913 Kirby Road in Holtham City, or Kirby Street Avenue, whatever you call it. And I was wondering, what you're talking about is only businesses? Or is this going to be everybody on Belknap that has a house, or everybody on these other streets that has a house? If they wanted to reface that, they would have to have 85%? Or can they have 85%? I like the idea of 85% for the whole darned place. Because if you're going in and redoing homes and stuff up on the north side of Fort Worth, they don't have anybody saying that they can't do it, and they're coming up with some beautiful places. I mean, the places were wrecked up there, and they're going around it and refacing the front of it and stuff. Well, the back doesn't look good, of course, because you're facing the back of another house. But the front of them, I mean, they're beautiful up there. So I'm asking, is it going to be homes too, or is it going to be businesses only?
This is for commercial purposes only, for non-residential structures. At this time, we do, however, have for residential structures, and it's been in place, I believe, since 1995.
And it's only 80%, not 85, 80?
80 percent, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Mr. Grzan, I believe you were, you wanted to address the council. If you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
James Grzan, 6208 Little Fossil Road. I just oppose this, I don't believe it's necessary. But the one thing that comes to mind in this age is recycling. A metal building's 100% recyclable. Metal is 100% recyclable. Wood, a lot of wood gets recycled, reused. A lot of it ends up in a landfill, but it's biodegradable there. Brick, we have a company... we have a company, a local company here, that was kind of born and raised out here in Millsap, Texas. And they advertise brick with holes in it. I've seen what's called Chicago pavers taken up and reused four and five times. I've yet to see anybody recycle a brick with holes in it. It breaks before you can clean it. It doesn't work good in driveways. It doesn't work good in road beds. It doesn't work good in creeks. I guess it works all right in landfills if you use a heavy enough dozer to push it. But I venture to say that concrete is not readily recyclable, as some of the other materials that y'all are wishing not to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grzan. Mr. Watkins?
Bob Watkins, 6140 Blue Spruce Circle. Well, I get to talk out to everybody what John and I've been, I've got this real good friend that he and I disagree on stuff all the time. This is one of them. I just, I think that there might be a street or two, as I mentioned last time. Midway comes to mind. There are streets in industrial areas that I think that this would be a hindrance. And so I don't, I don't necessarily believe that some of the streets, particularly Midway, that that's what needs to be done. I'm a little iffy on McLean, but I think McLean's going to end up being such a, it's going to end up a thoroughfare someday, so I guess we got to start there, so that's probably all right. But there's probably one or two others. I'm interested in the twenty-five percent. That's doable. Before, I was real interested in, I don't suspect that I'd want to build anything across the street, but I think I got four thousand square feet, maybe so. I could probably, I could probably see how I could, or a little less than four thousand feet. Surely, I wouldn't add more than a thousand feet. Is that what we're saying, Mr. Pliska?
It's going to be metro to the size of the structure.
That's what I say. If I've got a four thousand square foot building, I could build a thousand square foot on there. Well, let me ask you one other question. Let's say we're doing a chain building. Let's say this year, I come back here on the back end, which I do figure I could use a little something on the back. I've got brick, there was something there when I moved there, and we tore it down because it was burnt, it burned down. If I add something on the back, and then five years down the road, I'm playing like I'm going to live all this long, you know. Is it each time? In other words, or would it be when I come back in a few years down the road? Let's say, for instance, I built a seven hundred square foot something on the back, which I doubt if I would. Could I come along five years down the road and build another seven hundred square feet on the side? Or would I run into a situation where you'd say, well, the two together was...
Based on the permit and how much you are actually applying for the square footage of that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, let the folks at home hear what you're saying.
What he essentially is talking about, I'm assuming, is he's talking about in phases, in which we would not recognize phases at that point because a permit is only good for, I believe, a year. So it would be based on what he is applying for, for the permit at that time. And if he subjectively then increased it later on another twenty-five percent, then if there's no provision in the ordinance for that at the time he pulled that permit, I believe it would be acceptable.
Well, I like that. Not that I'm planning on doing anything. I'm generally more interested in down the road for other people. I don't know whether I've mentioned this to y'all or not, but don't any of y'all own any businesses in town? And it, or anyplace else? And that always interests me. And I note that Mr. Pliska said that four people on the planning and zoning were, had something to do with the possibilities of looking at this. And I believe we ascertained that there was three, three members of the planning and zoning, or four, that are business owners. You had the figure last time. And one of those can't vote.
Right.
And I don't know that, are those, are those business owners, are they any of the new people?
Yes.
Well, I think that this is, I like the, I like the masonry idea. I like it as long as a person can build on, and as long as there's a good, a good variance. Unlike Mr. Williams, I believe you got to have a variance. I don't think the zoning board of adjustments should look at it. As long as there, as long as there's a good reasonable, and the criteria that we use on the zoning board of adjustment seems to work well. It's not that it can't be financial, it can't be financial alone, that you got to have, and I'm not sure, in the zoning board of adjustment, I'm not sure that we say that you have to have all, but you have to have most. But you certainly can't just jump out and say, well, I can't afford to do this. I like that. I believe that's it. But this is just one of the things, and I've gotten up and spoken on almost every one of them. I would, I would appreciate it, the business owners in Hawthorne City would appreciate it, if they were at least mentioned into, in the conversation when you're making your decisions. I'm not asking you to pretend to do something that you're not really doing, but it'd be nice. Because there's a lot of us out here that do own businesses, and some of us own more than one business. And we do have a little tendency to feel left out, because Mr. Williams may be right in the fact that the citizens are paying the large amount of the taxes. But a prudent citizen would wish that we'd have enough businesses in town so that all of our personal taxes would go down. And you've got to continue to look at, you can't have the one-way attitude that the council over the years has had of saying, well, now, we've got to play to the citizens because they're the people that's going to vote for us. Well, because you've got some small-minded citizens that don't realize that if they just shut up and let some of the businesses speak every now and then, and put in businesses, and collect taxes, that their tax would go down. And that's what we need to realize. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Mr. Hedgecock, and then the lady back here.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernest Hedgescoff, consulting engineer. And I have offices on the, at 5701 Midway Road. And my question, I have two, I have two questions tonight that I questioned the need for putting Midway Road in there. Midway Road from Belknap East is pretty much developed along there now with metal buildings. As a matter of fact, I've just completed an application for two new metal buildings before this ordinance takes place. But because my clients were looking to build, and they didn't want to have to spend an extra twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for a, to put a masonry around the structure. And it would pretty well have dampened their, their construction at all. One of them is going in right across the street from my office, and on Midway and Thomas Road. It's going to be a new structure where they're moving from Carson up there on, to this new building and structure and site. But what I was thinking is, if, I think you could remove Midway Road from this corridor structure, and it would not damage or just make it look good. Most of those areas, it's an older area, and I just, there's a lot of vacant buildings there now. My building was for sale in January, and I almost bought it. But I didn't for other reasons, but it hasn't, half my building, I own half, I'm in half of it, and the other half is vacant, and it's been vacant since January. And there's lots of buildings up and down, up and down Midway that is vacant right now. And if you tap another requirement onto them, that they have to make an eighty percent metal building, or a masonry building, I think you'll dampen the development along Midway Road there. The other question I had was, I was talking to a metal building manufacturer the other day, and he gave me a sample of a metal building structure, but it, the outside, it is basically classified as a metal building, but it looks like a poured-in-place tilt-wall building. And my question, I guess, is, is how will we, will I have to get a variance if I wanted to build one of those that would look like a masonry structure, only it would be on a metal building frame? That's just a question, and I wanted to be sure that I understand the variance request, because I get quite a bit of business through variance requests. Could anybody answer that question?
It would have to be specifically defined in the masonry ordinance, and the ordinance that you have before you specifically design, or defines those masonry units.
So the answer is yes?
The answer would be no in his case, because it's not, it's not defined. What he's speaking of is a coating on the outside of the metal, which resembles masonry.
Ma'am, if you will, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Beth Jolly. I live at Port 206 Shadow Lane. How this is going to affect me is that, another issue that we're addressing tonight is that where I live is now going to be commercial. I will be facing the back of this gentleman's property. So I am that person that is looking at the three sides of the building that has masonry, and the back end is what I'll be looking at. So I would, you know, appreciate, if I'm going to have to be in a commercial area now, where my home faces a business that only will have a six-foot fence, that I have something to look at besides the back end of the building. I've been here thirteen years. I would appreciate you putting yourself in my place, and what it would be like for your home to turn into no longer a residential area, but a commercial place that, you know, does not even provide something that I'm going to find abuse in an Asian building with Asian products to sell. And I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Ms. Jolly?
If you don't mind, go back to the podium, please.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to, would you clarify exactly what area you live in? I'm not familiar with Shadow Lane.
I live off of Shadow Lane, just off of Parish.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council at this time? Mr. Harper?
David Harper, 5600 North Beach. I'm a little bit ignorant to this, this subject, but if you're going to go brick, I don't know that you're going to accomplish anything if you don't require some architectural integrity to the design of the buildings. Because, you know, just a nineteen fifty's era like we have in some of our schools that I went to here, they're just nice and square and nondescript. And I think what you find in some of the neighborhoods that are being brought back in Fort Worth and some of the other areas, the buildings have some architectural significance. So I'm not trying to add more cost, but I don't know that you're going to, what are you going to accomplish with, if you can just put a, you know, ninety-degree angle, square, nondescript brick building as opposed to a metal building? I like the idea of masonry, but I think maybe if you could tweak that a little more, so that the buildings actually have some character and would have a lasting effect. If you're trying to, if you're trying to improve the community, pardon me, some architectural integrity and significance on the buildings, I think lasts much further than thirty, forty, fifty years, as opposed to just a nondescript masonry requirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Mr. Ecklin?
My name's Dre Ecklin. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace, which abuts to the 5500 block of Midway. And I've lived on that block since, more or less, since 1974. I can tell you from my experience on Midway, and it's pretty extensive, that the 5500 block, the council approved a tilt-wall building, maybe last year, the year before, they built one. The one next to it's a tilt-wall building. The big one next to that, rather the large one, is a masonry building. The 5700 block where Mr. Hedgecock's office is, is a masonry building. The one across the street needs to be torn down is that old nasty nursing home over there we all know about. Okay? Then we have a bunch of houses down there. Maybe down at the end of the block, 59, outside, there's a, maybe a metal building where the fireman is. And then we have the old gas station on the corner, which is masonry. You know, lots of masonry buildings up there, even though the people didn't have to build masonry. Okay? There is one newer metal building that has some architectural integrity. It's got some fancy doodads about it. And then down a little further, there's a large, I guess it was a manufacturing plant at 6450 down there, that area. It's a large plant, and I see them painting like crazy on it and redoing the parking lot, so it looks like maybe somebody's coming in there. And that's a masonry building. And those buildings down there, all in that corridor, in that end of the block, are large tilt walls. So maybe Mr. Pliska has a better inventory than I do, but just from my experience, I can tell you that most of the buildings down there are, in fact, masonry. There's a couple that got thrown up in the last couple of years on Midway that were, they look like Big Ten cans. And they put auto body shops in, or auto shops. And there's some on the side buildings. And there is, in fact, places for people, Delante, Solona, Monita, those hundred blocks that way, that would not be included in this ordinance. And if a guy felt like he needed to build a metal building, he could certainly do it over there. There's lots of places, and they do in fact have them over there. So I think the masonry ordinance is important. I don't think there's anything wrong with adding Midway on down there to try to make this a professional-looking city and get rid of some of these, you know, they are a maintenance problem. Okay? The idea of masonry is not so much recycling, but, you know, you don't, it maintains much better. And Mr. Pliska and I have had numerous discussions about residential masonry, so we won't go into that right here. But architectural integrity is important. Good design's important. We'd like to encourage every business that comes here to try to make their business look nice and be successful. We'd like to support those businesses in any case. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ecklin. We have anyone else who wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, since this is a public hearing, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And I, as I do that, I want to thank all of you who have taken the time to address the council, to ask questions, make comments, give us your input. Because the council does want to hear what you have to say and give consideration to what you have to say before they take, take any action. Mr. Pliska, the public hearing is closed. Do you have anything else you want to add before I call for motion regarding this?
No, Mayor.
Mr. Muir?
Thank you.
Mr. Olson, is there something, from a legal point of view, that needs, we need to be sure, is a part of this motion to cover some of the concerns you had earlier, if the council should wish to approve this with the eighty percent? Just want to be sure when we make the motion, we've covered all our bases.
One issue that I heard brought up during the public hearing, I think Mr. Watkins raised this issue, about if we do go with a percentage requirement, is it going to apply to additions above the currently existing square footage of the building? Or is it going to be measured on a building permit by building permit basis? And I haven't heard specific language on, on any percentage requirement, but we might need to address that, just to make it clear what the requirement is. And then beyond that, I would just ask the council to determine what the variance standards would be that you would like to utilize if you do allow variances to this ordinance.
Okay, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and so it'll come back up for final action. If we need to fine-tune it, we'll be able to at the, at the second reading. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you had your light on first, and then Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember Lanford.
Right. Mayor, can I make a few comments? Because you were asking for a motion, but I'm not quite ready to make a motion yet.
Yes, you may. Yes, you may, you may.
To me, I, I think that, that what this ordinance is about is the vision that, that many people in the community have had of us, is increasing the image of the community. That's what I've heard from some of the P and Z members, something that can be done that would help Haldom City. Now, some business owners, a minority, I feel, in, in Haldom City, would say that the citizens have small minds, but I think that a lot of them understand that businesses really do, are, are important for Haldom City, and if we can allow them to have a good image in Haldom City, it prospers all of us, not only the business owners, but the residents. And I think that's what the citizens are thinking about, at least that's the ones that I've talked to, I've heard from. There was a little bit of misunderstanding, I think. One of the people came up that said, seemed to imply that this would be a burden on business owners, and, and I think that it, it's clear that this is only for businesses that decide that they're going to expand their businesses. Existing businesses have no effect with this ordinance, is that, that remain in their businesses and just make repairs, repairs to their businesses. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we see that the surrounding cities, I, I've heard some of the people say that surrounding cities have a nicer business community, nicer business climate, and those are the same surrounding cities that have this type of ordinance in place. And so I think that the citizens felt like this is something that maybe we can start taking steps to improving the image of Haldom City, and, and I applaud the citizens for having the insight to see that. I think that this, the six steps for the variances that Wayne put in the back is probably needs to be replaced in the ordinance, the way it currently reads right now, because I think that gets more explicit, it, it details the variance. I think we need to have a very explicit, clear, concise variance procedure in this. And so any motion that's made, I hope that my fellow council members will appreciate the idea that we need to have something concise and explicit in there. And also, I agree with the twenty-five percent that Bill said. I think that that's a, a good idea, that businesses that are doing something that's just a small addition, I, I don't think that this needs to be levied, this needs to be put on. Bear in mind that the vision of this is to improve the image of Haldom City to the benefit of businesses and residents alike.
Okay, Councilmember Clark, and Councilmember Sutton pointed out a procedural matter that I'd failed to honor. We do need an opportunity, before I call for motion, for members of the council to make any comments they'd like to, and at an appropriate point, I'll call for motion. But at this point, any comments or questions by members of the council? Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember Lanford, you had your light on earlier.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pliska, in hearing the public hearing, brought to my attention, one of the special parts there was that if you have a site on the corridor, and if you have a site off the corridor, and you build in the same-sized building, it would be less expensive to build off the corridor than on the corridor. When we compared other cities to what we're trying to do, are they corridors zoned like we are? Are they all businesses? Are we comparing apples to apples?
Most of the cities that we polled, again, are a nucleus around Haldom City. Those are written into their districts. So that is inclusive in, in that particular business district. So whether it is on a corridor or not, it is inclusive in their, in their district.
So in that city, you would also be able to get around the eighty percent by building outside the district if it's, if it's zoned business?
No, no. It is as per zoning district.
Per zoning district?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right, thank you.
Councilmember Lanford?
Well, that's an excellent lead into my observation. I, I appreciate everybody that has spoken on this, and, and in particular, the folks representing our, our business community, and certainly our residents. Responding to Mr. Williams' suggestion that we make, make this a standard for all of the zones, I think, based on what you've just said here, that's an excellent idea, that, that we just do away with all these streets, these corridors, and just make it outright that it applies to, to the zoning itself. That, that seems to me appropriate, gets around some of the, some of the unfair issues that we've, we've heard discussed here. And responses to Mr. Hedgescoff about leaving Midway out, I will say, especially Midway, that, that I am not convinced that Midway is a, an industrial corridor. Lots of folks live down there, they, they're residences. I think it's a viable residential area, and I want to keep it that way and make it more so. I want to make it more welcome for residences in that area, and less welcome for the heavy industry that's going on down there, at least west of Carson. That's, that's just a personal opinion. Let's see, the, the, only two E, the, the subsection one here where, where we are talking about the waiver, this compliance with this ordinance would impair the architectural design and creative, creativity of the building. There is no way on earth that we can go to press with that, that language in there. I would just, we just can't. We're going to have to, some work needs to be done there. I, I will tell you, I am not comfortable with as many changes as I think need to be made to this. I'm not comfortable with a motion to proceed tonight. We've got plenty of time. We need to make sure that everybody has input. Coming up on the Christmas holidays, we've got people out, want to make sure that everybody gets to make some input here. I personally support the idea of the masonry requirements. I have no issues with that at all. It, it suits me fine if metal buildings stop right out there at Fort Worth city limits and don't come into Haldom City, that's fine. But, but I do think we need to, to step back and, and visit this some more, and that, that would be what I would, I will, would like to table this and, or send this back. If I table it, does it go back to, does it go back to the P and Z?
That's your call. You can either send it back to P and Z if you think you would benefit from their input, or you can just table it and have staff bring back a draft for you to consider again at your next council.
Personally, I'd like, I'd like for P and Z to take another shot at this.
Can I just make a cautionary statement? I have a rush of individuals that are looking at this ordinance and standing by to submit building plans. So it will have to be, without a moratorium in place, it'll have to be business as usual, and we will have to accept these plans as we're developing this ordinance.
And that is the nature of the law. Anybody who makes an application for a building permit before we adopt this ordinance is entitled to build under our current regulations.
That is correct.
So if we, if we, we can't put a moratorium in immediately, can we not? I mean, we have, that's not part of the agenda.
No, sir, we don't have it posted on the agenda tonight.
Right, right, that's what I thought. Okay.
Well, could I, could I interject here? Maybe, maybe what we want to do is go ahead and take the first reading now with the comments and suggestions, and come back, and, and if we need to, that's when we could really see the cleaned-up language, you know, between now and the second reading. Would that be acceptable?
I'm fine with that, as long as we get another shot at it, and-
Right.
And, and that would mean it would come back the first meeting in January? Is that correct?
Right, first door.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, if we, if, if we need to do that, but I, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this two E one thing here. That's, that's-
Right, so am I.
That scares, scares me to death. I don't know what we'd do with that, but have, well, if, if, if we approve that here, let me, let me ask you this. Since we're coming up on the holidays, are you, is your staff and P and Z going to have time to?
We have, we have, again, we are prepared. If you, if you do not wish to kick it back to P and Z, now, if you kick it back to P and Z, if you so choose to kick it back to P and Z, that will take us quite some time to bring it back to you due to the holidays. If you're prepared to make the changes that we suggested here tonight and in the pre, the pre-hearing, we will bring it back to you then, the first meeting in January.
When do you, your P and Z meetings, you've got one tomorrow night.
That is correct.
Right. Do you have another one?
Yeah, that would not be until after the following meeting in January.
So they, we wouldn't be able to bring it back to the first meeting in January?
No.
It'd be the second meeting in January?
Not if the council so chooses to kick it back to P and Z.
No, I'm, no, I'm, what I'm asking is if they passed it on first reading tonight, on the condition that we kick, you know, go, you're wanting to pass it and then get P and Z input-
That's what's been suggested, yeah.
On, on the additional revisions, P and Z wouldn't be able to address those revisions and get it back for a second reading until the second meeting in January. Is that correct?
If the council passes it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to take it to P and Z. We would be, just give staff-
It'd just be staff, dealing with staff.
The authority to write in the changes and bring it back to council for second reading.
All right.
Now, again, under section two E, we would be replacing that verbiage, that wordage. With that, Mr. Olson discussed, with the six criteria that we have done with the zoning board of adjustments since I've been with the city a year, two thousand.
And that's what we were talking about-
Correct.
Earlier tonight and now.
Right. Without a planned business district, there's no way that I would even be able to make that call in terms of compliance with the ordinance impairing architectural design and creativity of the building. So it's, it's very imperative from staff that we, that we take this out. It is, it is highly subjective.
Now, what about if, as Mr. Lanford was suggesting, doing away with the corridors and just making it part of?
That could be very feasible, too, because you would not simply list the corridors, but you would mention the standards would apply to these zoning districts listed in section two A.
I, I, I-
I'm just, I'm just saying, if, I'm not sure if you've made a motion or not.
Well, I haven't yet.
Okay. We're not, we're not ready for a motion yet. Okay, all right. If, if he was to make a motion, or if any of them were, want to make a motion regarding these things, they would make the motion contingent on sort of those six items that Mr. Olson had talked about. The changing of the corridors that you just made mention of, that, those were the two main things I've heard talked about tonight that seemed to have some issues. I don't know what other, I mean, there's, there's still some other council members here that haven't chimed in yet with their comments, but this thing can get done to a point, I mean, with a lot of, if, if, if you're wanting to do that. I, I think there's enough information to where the council could do that tonight if they so chose.
Well, I, I will tell you, I'm still pretty uncomfortable with getting in a big hurry on this, on this ordinance.
I understand that. We just want to let you know what, what happens if, if you don't want to.
I understand that, there's consequences possible for that, and, you know, but, but the ordinance is going to be around for a long time, and I want it to be right, and I don't want us to be hasty and, and, you know, get, get something that's, that's not in the best interest of, of the city. Just have that, that sense that we, we don't want to be rushed, because we've got some, some holes in our rules right now that someone might take advantage of. I'm sorry, that's just their good luck and our bad luck, but I want, I want to get this right, and I'd like for us to take the time to get that right, and in particularly to, to get some, some more public feedback. And I'm, I'm concerned that over the holidays, people are going to be out and they're going to come back mid-January or sometime and figure, figure out what's happening to them, and especially if we, I mean, we're making, we're talking about some significant changes when we change from the corridors to all the zones. I mean, that's, that is huge.
That is, that is a significant change.
That's, that's, yeah.
That would include quite a few, quite a few streets.
But that could still happen during the time of the holidays, between first reading and second reading. I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative here with you, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to, to, to help. I'm sorry.
Well, I understand, I understand. No, I, I appreciate everybody's input. I just, like I say, I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable moving, moving too far along on this too quickly, and like I say, even with the warning that people are going to jump up there and take advantage of it, you know? So be it, I think, for the long-term interest of, in particular, of, of some, some areas of the city where, that are, are in danger, and I, that, that, that residential area down there around Midway is one of them. I think that's a viable neighborhood, and we need to support it, and I'd, I'd like to, to take the time to do it right. Thanks.
Anything further, Councilmember? Councilmember Hutchison, and then Councilmember Bransum, and when they're finished, I'll be ready for a motion.
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Lanford about the, the confusion of, of the, of the language, and it seems like we're cutting and pasting a lot here, and that's what confuses me. I feel like that we'd probably get a bunch of variance requests, just because the unclear language that's there, and, and we've got a substitute in there. I, I like the idea of a masonry, but it seems like the, the four points that we really stressed, the twenty-five percent, the eighty percent, the three hundred dollars, and, and then the variance requirements are, are pretty significant issues that apply to this, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to make sure that we do this, I, I want to make sure that we do this right also. I understand the request that you have before you right now for businesses. I do also understand that this is for, primarily for, for additions and remodel, not new. So I would, I would be totally in favor of removing all of those corridors and just making it applicable to all, to all the zones. I think that addresses, in my opinion, that addresses Mr. Williams' mentality of making it fair and equitable for all involved. So there, those are my comments. I think there's four major points that we've got to address here, plus the corridor mentality that we've got to address, and that, and that makes it five, and, and we really got some work to do on the language here.
Councilmember Bransum?
Thank you, Mayor. I have three or four questions. When the P and Z met, we've talked about this at our last council meeting, so it's not like this is our first meeting that we've, or maybe it was two council meetings ago. This isn't the first time that we've talked about the masonry ordinance. So I do believe that people have had an opportunity to become aware that we are looking at it. I agree that they don't know that we are now considering expanding the corridors, but I do believe it's been in the paper, it's been published twice. I do believe that people are aware, or those that are interested are aware that we've been looking at it. I have a couple of questions, though. When the P and Z met the second time that it came back to us, did they talk about these six variance issues in that meeting, the ones that, that we had?
Yes, yes, they had it at their-
So the P and Z has already addressed the six variance issues.
They had it at their disposal.
And what did they say about that? Anything?
Again, when you sent it back to planning and zoning, you, council suggested that we look at amending the, the zoning ordinance so that ZBA could handle the variance requirements, as well as a standalone ordinance, and, and look at the variance requirements. The, we did discuss both the ZBA requirements, and we did discuss the verbiage of the, as you see it here now, on the variance or waiver requirements. This is the verbiage that planning and zoning adopted, as you see marked out in this ordinance.
So that's the, the kind of shortened version of the, of the six back here.
They had, now, they had that six in order to discuss how zone, how ZBA would handle the variance, okay? And how ZBA would handle it if you rewrite the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
They rewrote the standalone ordinance, as you see right now. In my discussions with legal, though, the, the way ZB, the way planning and zoning rewrote this waiver, there were problems with the way it is, in such that our solution to that problem is to go ahead and go or clarify with those six statements that the ZBA follows and make it conditionally across the board.
When, when they also, in, in the beginning, when they were setting out the corridors that they were mentioning, did they ever talk about making it citywide?
No, we did, we did not discuss that.
So that, so that one's new. So the six issues aren't new to the P and Z, but the citywide would be new to the P and Z?
Yes, that would be new. And that would be inclusive of not only the, the, those areas outside the corridor, but it would be, have to be inclusive in the, I believe, in the city zoning ordinance as well.
So even if we, for the sake of conversation, if we pass this tonight, we still wouldn't have the second reading until the second Monday of January, right?
Correct.
It's January, I believe, January the tenth, isn't it?
Second, what did I say? Second meeting? I meant second Monday. Oh, okay.
Second, it'd be January tenth.
Right, so the, so, so it would not go into effect until January the tenth. All right. So I guess, with respect to what Mr. Lanford said, I'm wondering why we can't go ahead and get it started, and, well- and get it started. And, well, at the next public hearing, they would have an opportunity to speak about the citywide if that was the route we wanted to go. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So if we don't do that, then we're February before we have the, in, in a perfect world, we're February before the ordinance would be on the books, right?
That's, that's correct.
If you send it back to Planning and Zoning Commission, realistically, it'll be the first meeting in February before this ordinance would go into effect, at the earliest.
Correct.
Well, that would be the first new reading.
Yeah.
But it could be, it could still have some changes made between now and Jan, January the 10th.
Right, but not for P&amp;Z consideration. It wouldn't be able to go back, it would be handled at a staff level. If it's going to be kicked back to P&amp;Z, for, like you said, the, the removal of the corridors and, and making it all the zoning, the zoning districts, we would have the first reading, the earliest would be on the second council meeting in January. Is that correct? With the second reading taking effect sometime in February.
But we could issue a moratorium January the 10th, is that correct?
Yeah, we could post something on the agenda to issue a moratorium.
Until the, okay.
Anything further?
I think that's fine, thanks.
Council member Holcomb.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a second and reiterate, I know we had a citizen come up, and I apologize deeply. I, I didn't write your name down when you were up here, but I was listening. I can sympathize with that, of course, as I'm sure we all can, as, as homeowners. But I wanted to make sure that, that, and I may have misunderstood your point at the time, but I wanted to make sure you understood what we were looking at, in the sense that anything that, that we're doing tonight, whether it be the 85% or not, is, is going to improve your situation. I mean, if you're currently surrounded by, you know, businesses, oh, you're not, okay. You, you could, okay, you, you could be essentially surrounded by metal buildings, whereas if we pass this, it could be masonry. So I wanted to make sure, you know, you, you saw that angle. Also, on the various different points that everyone made, I was kind of on track with, in the sense of time, trying to move forward. But I kind of like the idea of making everything apply across the board. And I think on that note, we probably ought to wait. I, I would, you know, like many of the others have expressed, I'd hate to rush into it. And I think there's a lot of things we need to cover. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, any further comments before I, I receive a motion? Okay, there being none. I'm in line for motion regarding item number 10, council member Lanford, and then council member Sutton.
While I move to table ordinance 0200402315, back to the staff for changes that we have discussed tonight, and presentation back to us the next, staff, staff.
So you do not want this to go back to P&amp;Z?
No. Well, well, I mean, I appreciate the work they've done. I just think that the staff is, we, we've got a general idea of what, where the P&amp;Z is headed, and, and I'd like to, I'd like for the staff to rework this.
Wayne, is there anything else needs to be in that motion at this point?
You know, just clarify, what I understand the motion to be, that staff will put together some revisions in accordance with the discussion we've had tonight, and this will come back to the city council for first reading at your first meeting in January.
Okay. Council member Sutton?
I was prepared to make another motion, so I respectfully declined to make that motion at the time to allow this motion to proceed forward.
Okay, council member Branson, and then council member Clark. Council member Clark, we have a motion on the floor.
Can I ask a question, reference clarity of the motion?
Sure.
Mr. Lanford wants this ordinance to go back to staff for staff's input, which I understand, which pushes the first reading further back into the new year. If I understand correctly, if we approve the ordinance now, it goes back to staff for the same consideration, but brings the second reading closer to us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I think the motion has been clearly defined. Do I have a second to council member Lanford's motion?
I withdraw the motion for no second.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn. I am open for a motion regarding item number 10. Council member Sutton?
Okay, well, let's, let's try this. I want to approve on first reading ordinance number 0-2004-023-15 with the following revisions to be worked in to, to the ordinance. Section 2B, the addition of a 25% variance for variance applicability, a trigger threshold, as it were. Section 2E, removal, removal of the struck and shaded portions of 2, or of 2E, section 1, A, B, and C, and the insertion of the wording that we received from Wayne Olson that corresponds to the same variance procedures that are used by the ZBA. And three, in section 2A with the corridor, I would propose that the staff bring back a split proposal that includes all corridors and the current corridors that are there. And I would like to make a comment on that if this is seconded.
Council member Sutton, I have one question regarding the elements that you identified. We had had a conversation earlier about going from a $100 to a $300.
Oh, yes, and, and the inclusion of that, too. I'm sorry, I did omit that. Thank you.
Mr. Olson, do you have any questions regarding this motion before I ask for a second?
I, I do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council member Sutton, item 1, the 25% provision, your, the intent of your motion is to allow an addition of up to 25% of the square footage of the existing building without requiring masonry.
Correct, before the variance provisions would be hit, or, or becoming effective.
Okay. I think I got your motion on the variance procedures. The, the third item about the split proposal, what was that?
Okay, I, I'm asking this because I want to make some comments about the corridor. If the staff could bring back two proposals, that the council could look at both of them and, and also receive public input about, if one of those proposals would include the corridors that are currently in this proposal, and the other proposal would include all of the cor, the corridors within the city, as Mr. Williams had stated.
As per zoning.
Yes.
All the, include all the districts, all these?
All the districts, yeah. That's probably a better way to state it, as Mr. Williams has stated.
Okay. And was, was that?
Yes.
Were those the only requirements, then?
Also, the change.
And the $300, yeah.
From $100 to $300, correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is everybody clear on the motion? Okay, everybody's clear on the motion? Council member Branson?
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Council member Sutton, you said you had a comment to make on the motion.
I, I'd just like to say that the, from what I understood from the P&amp;Z members, that the, having just a number of corridors at this time is to multi-step this into Holton City, not take the whole thing at once. And that may be, that may not be a problem at this point, but we'll talk about that in the next meeting. I think that we all ought to do our homework in finding out if, if the business community really wants to go to the full district applicability, or whether just these, to multi-step it, as was talked before, would be appropriate.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none. I'll call for the vote at this time. And that passes by unanimous vote. And ladies and gentlemen, it's 18 minutes until nine. We're going to take a 10-minute recess. So if you will, let's be back in promptly in 10 minutes. The council is back in session following a 10-minute recess. We come to item number 11. Mr. Mayor, you want to introduce item number 11?
Only to say that item 11 and 12 are very closely related. Mr. Plisca will be guiding us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, council members, citizens of Holton City. This item is Z007-04, and is to consider the application of Mr. Ernest Hitchcock of Consulting Engineers on behalf of Miss, Mr. Young-Hung for a zoning change request from the D duplex residential district to the C3 commercial district on the west half of Lot 9 ER Alexander Edition, containing approximately .12 acres of land located on the south side of McNutt and is locally known as 4100 McNutt. Again, as I stated, this is the west half of Lot 9 in order to incorporate a new development. The site, as I stated previously, is owned duplex residential, and the C3 request will allow for commercial development of this area, and that will be the plat following in the next hearing. Adjacent zoning and uses to the north is C3, and is a motel. To the south is D duplex residential. East is SF2 single-family residential, and the west is C3 commercial district, of which this will become a part of. The comprehensive land use plan, the site is designated as commercial according to the city's comprehensive land use plan, and therefore the request of rezoning would be in compliance with said plan. At their meeting on the November 23rd, 2004, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this zoning change request from the D duplex residential district to the C3 commercial district. And again, I'm formally submitting the attached ordinance of this rezone with an exhibit of a meets and bounds description of this western portion of the lot. Also, exhibit B is a site plan of the, of the reference construction site.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I've not opened it at this point. Members of the council, do you have any questions for Mr. Plisca regarding the zoning change issue in item 11? And we will, even though item 11 and 12 are somewhat related, we will have to address each one of those individually. So any questions for Mr. Plisca? Okay, there being none. I'll open the
Thank you, Mayor.
Public hearing at this time. And Mr. Hitchcock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernest Hitchcock, consulting engineer for, for this redevelopment and this rezoning request. And as we, as Mr. Plisca pointed out, this is only a small portion of the 1.9 acres that we talked about. It's 1.12 tenths of an acre, which is 25 foot by 220 feet long. And in order to, to develop the full site, 100, the 1.94 acres, we are asking to get this rezoned to match up with the surrounding property there. I do have a, a layout of the type building that we're looking at. It'll be a retail structure, which will be facing to the, towards Belknap. It'll be visible, hopefully, from Belknap. And we'll have entrance there. You've seen the site plan in your packets for the, for the building. We do, we'll, out of this 25 feet that we're asking to be rezoned, 10 feet of that will be the landscaping. It'll all be landscaped. And then the other 15 feet will be traffic, will be a driveway behind the building. So we're not asking to put any actual structures on this 25 feet. It's just going to be, it'll all be just about behind our structure. This will be a masonry structure, and it'll be all CMU walls and glass fronts, as you see there. And so we will comply with the masonry ordinance, whether you pass it next week or not, or next month, or whenever. We will, I just talked to Ms. Jolly, and she was concerned about the, the dumpster location that's on the site. And I told her that we will move this dumpster location, which is in the corner there next to, behind the buildings. I'll move it over to by the, the fire plug over here on the, back behind the Seabreeze motel, so that, that'll do as much as we can to eliminate the, any possible conflict with the residents over here on the, the east side, or the south and east. We do, we will be putting a masonry, a wooden fence around the property that abuts all of the single-family residences, along with the 10-foot landscaping strip. All of the lighting that we will have in the struc, on the structure will be directed down, where there will be no lights overflow into the residential property. It'll all be in the parking lot, and it'll all be off of the building. It'll just be straight down. And there'll be shaded and hooded lights. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Right now, this will be basically a retail establishment. We don't have any actual client, people that are going to lease it. I can't tell you it's going to be a restaurant, it's going to be a cleaner, it's going to be a doctor, lawyer, or what. It's just going to be a retail establishment that will conform to all of the requirements of the C3 permitted uses. It's a very unique piece of property in that, as you notice, if you look at it, it's basically two boxes that are kind of offset. And we had a real difficult time trying to meet with the staff and get them satisfied that we were going to be able to accommodate the dri, fire department to get to the lower part of the property and have adequate fire protection and have a way for the fire department and the ma, and the police to get in there. Right now, we have no plans for the lower part. We did have, we have some, some preliminary ideas that we might could put a building, but that'll all depend on how the, the, this one building goes. If it goes well, then they may look at putting another structure there. But right now, the only thing we're going to build is this one 6,000-square-foot building. And we are going to construct a water, a fire lane, a fire line, I mean, coming from McNutt down and around and back into McNutt with a fire hydrant down here at just about this little narrow point, so that it'll allow, there's a fire hydrant on McNutt now, and that'll give us another fire hydrant there. That'll give us total protection of the property. And this, we met with the fire department. And the reason this is a hammerhead is it's just an economic situation, because it's a little cheaper to build a, a hammerhead. It allows, it's an allowable turnaround for the fire trucks, and it's a little smaller than a cul-de-sac. And so that's the only reason. It, it does look a little funny, but when we build it, it'll all be paved and it'll all look nice. So you won't see it. It'll just be a painted stripe across there on this, on our paving area. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, I want us to remember, council, under item number 11, we're simply talking not about the plat part, but the zoning change. And we'll address the plat plot under item number, item number 12. So council member Clark?
I'm sorry, I kind of overlapped there, but the zoning, basically, the zoning that, that we're asking to be rezoned is, will be a driveway, landscaping, fence landscaping and driveway, and then the building.
So let's address that first, and then we'll address the, the plat itself. Council member Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may have mentioned it, and I may have missed it. I must have. Can you tell me the approximate number of parking spaces for a 6,000-square-foot building?
38. The minimum is 30. What Mr. Whisson, Mr. Plisca just gave me that. There's, the minimum requirements would be 30 parking spaces.
In, in commercial areas for C3, it's one per 200 square foot of the, of the building.
Okay. And we're, that is in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Over compliance?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. We have 38 parking spaces there. And I might point out, just to add to this, this 25 feet, you could not build a structure on this building, I mean, on this 25 feet. There's nothing we could do with it. And so that's why I feel like it's the highest and best use for this property, to be used, rolled over into our C3 property so that it can be developed, in the fully developed property.
Any further questions by the council for Mr. Hitchcock? Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock. May need you back up there again in a moment.
Thank you.
Members of the audience, anyone wishing to address the council regarding item number 11, and that is the changing of the zoning on this piece of property? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing. Did you want to, did you want to say anything? Okay. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I will call for motion for the first reading of ordinance 0-004-028-15. Council member Lanford?
Most to approve ordinance 0200402815.
Motion to approve, council member Motion to approve, council member Hutchinson?
That would be a second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Do we have any discussion on the motion? And remember, this is the first reading of a zoning change. Okay, there being none, I'll call for the vote at this time, and that passes by unanimous vote of the council. Now, let's talk about item number 12, and that is a plat approval, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, citizens of Holton City. As stated previously, with the zoning request being voted on, we're now addressing the plat of that entire area. And this is consideration and action regarding the application of Mr. Ernest Hitchcock of Consulting Engineers on behalf of Mr. Young-Hung for a final plat of Lot 6R ER Alexander Edition, being a final plat of lots 1A, 2A, 3C, 4C, 5A, 6, 7, and 8, and west half of 9, which we've just zoned, ER Alexander Edition in the C3 commercial district, located on the south side of McNutt, and contains approximately 1.9267 acres of land, and is locally known as 4100 McNutt. As we stated previously, and Mr. Hitchcock, the applicant's final plating the property in order to bring the property into compliance with the city subdivision ordinance requirements, and to develop this as a commercial district, as he stated. The site, as I said, is located on the south side of McNutt, and will be accessed from McNutt at this time. Again, the property is now currently zoned C3 commercial district. All utility companies have been contacted during the plating process. Utility locations have been addressed, and through the developer's submittal. And again, access to the property will be from McNutt Street. The final plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of November 23rd, 2004. Therefore, I formally submit the copy of said plat, the 11 by 17 reduced copy, for your approval.
Do we have questions for Mr. Plisca on item number 12? This is the approval of the plat. Council member Sutton?
Mr. Plisca, did you have any public response to this plat? I know you mail out each time, and...
During the zoning change, yes, we did. We had some concerns from the neighborhood. This, this to my left will indicate the houses along Shadow Lane that were concerned about the development, and they were included in the 200-foot notice of the rezone. And I believe the lady that spoke earlier is a resident of Shadow Lane.
Thank you.
Anything further from Mr. Plisca at this stage? Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Hitchcock, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we mentioned before, we've worked diligently on this piece of property, and I do want to thank the council for passing that ordinance that allowed us to only plat our property a couple of months ago, because we were into a real can of worms when I had to plat the property on Belknap and the Yummy Ice Cream Place and this other half of this Lot 9. We would still be talking to people. So, I do appreciate the council's wisdom there in passing that ordinance. We feel like we've got a good development going. It will be an asset to the neighborhood and to the city of Holton City, and it'll have everything that complies with the city's ordinances. And we've done everything we possibly can to alleviate the... I told Ms. Jolly, we will move the dumpster over to get it away from the residential, put it back up next to the Zeebreeze motel. And I'll be glad to answer any other questions. We will have the fire protection and all the necessary, the fire lanes and everything will meet the city's requirements. Be any other, any other items that the city needs, and we'll be glad to work with them.
Any questions for Mr. Hitchcock? Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock.
Thank you.
Do we have any member of the audience who wishes to address the council at this time, this being a public hearing? And Ms. Jolly, if you will, go ahead and give us your name and address again for the record, please.
My name is Beth Jolly. I reside at 1406 Shadow Lane, which is the dead-end part of Shadow Lane. And as he said, my neighbor's across the street. That's where the dumpster would have been, at the corner of their backyard. I have three steps to go up to my front door, which will allow me to see over the six-foot fence that they're proposing to put up. I would like to put out for consideration that perhaps a masonry fence would be something that would hold up more, because at this time, we do have people who come from McNutt over the fences, through the yards. And I find it hard to believe that a six-foot fence is gonna deter people from doing that. He had mentioned earlier at P&amp;E that they were looking at, at some point, having an access onto Parish Road. My concern is, where is that gonna be? Like I say, I'm the dead end. McNutt is on the other side of the fence. My other concern was the traffic at the corner of Parish and Belknap. It's already impossible to get across that street. I have a 17-year-old who drives all the way down to Leighton, so that she has use of a light. I can't tell you how many times I've almost ran over somebody trying to come off that road as I'm trying to access Parish. And I feel like with all this extra traffic, it's even gonna be a deadlier situation. The other thing I just thought I would mention to you is that 13 years ago, I purchased my home for $42,000. Two years ago, when I had it refinanced at a price for 87. I think that our neighborhood there is trying to build it up, and I don't believe that coming in and placing these businesses in our neighborhood. On the main thoroughfares, yes, but not in our neighborhood. I think that we're making a very bad mistake, because I believe that it will drive us out. The other thing, too, is that Mr. Hitchcock, you know, told me that this is going to be another Asian market. I don't spend my money there. I go to Fort Worth and I go to Hirsch to spend my money, because there isn't anything there for me to shop at. And I believe that's something else we need to look at. It's a little bit of diversity. I have a lot of diversity on my block. I have a Hispanic. I have two Asian families, and they've all said the same thing. So, I would just like to open that up for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jolly. Council members or staff, any comments regarding any of the issues Ms. Jolly raised a moment ago? Council member Lanford?
Just a question, is the proposed six-foot fence, is it solid wood? I'm just trying to imagine somebody scaling a six-foot wood fence. I can understand getting over a chain link fence.
Happens on Bad Boys all the time.
On what? What's that?
Shut up, sir.
Okay, what was the question?
Well, I, I, there was some concern, I think, about people cutting across the property and getting over the six-foot fence, and it's a, it, you can actually, you have people that scale a six-foot wooden fence.
I don't have one.
Well, I don't know. How high would you have to get a fence for somebody not to be able to scale it? I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you can scale a six-foot wooden fence, you could scale a 12-foot wooden fence, couldn't you? I mean, I don't know, were you Spider-Man? Is that... I don't know. I'm asking this question.
Ma'am, if you will, come back, come on back up to the mic. We want to be sure, not only the folks in the audience, but the people who are watching on TV.
Okay, on a wooden fence, you have those wooden braces on the back. That's what I use to climb over. You hang on, and you put one foot up, and you just keep going. If it's masonry, there's not anything for them to put their foot on to climb up and go over. If it's eight-foot, it's gonna be a little bit harder for them to pick somebody up and lift up over.
Okay, thanks.
Council member Sutton?
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Plisca. We have a fencing ordinance, I believe, in the town. Are we able to specify seven-foot or eight-foot fences?
The zoning ordinance section is for fencing in commercial areas, and the minimum requirement is a six-foot high.
But it can be higher than that?
It can be higher. It could go to eight feet, but that would be at the discretion of the developer. This is not a conditional use permit. I don't believe you can operate outside and ask for that. It would be strictly at the developer to volunteer to do that. The maximum height is eight feet for a commercial district. The minimum height is six feet.
Okay, well, let me ask you a question. Can we suggest changes to the plat in this public meeting?
You can suggest changes to the plat, or the, but you can suggest, but you cannot...
Right.
Rule on that. I guess you could ask for the developer's cooperation in a higher fence.
Right.
But I don't believe you can operate outside the scope of the ordinance.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what are, what are rights as a council, or...
If you so choose, I guess, to deny the plat over the fence permit, however, but there are certain rules that will kick in as a result of that.
Okay.
Council member Lanford?
Well, I'll ask, is the developer willing to put up an eight-foot fence, sir?
This development is pretty costly and has been time-consuming, and I feel like they've pretty well stretched their limits right now. And any increase in cost would be a real detriment to this whole development, I'm afraid.
Well, how much cost are we talking about? Two feet of fence for the length of it? I mean, I know it'd be...
I really don't know. I don't have a cost estimate on fences.
Well, then, how are you, how are we able to determine it's too much?
Because it's an extra, and we know what they're spending now. And right now, they're stretched. I would say it'd probably be double. If it's, if it's $12 a foot or $15 a foot, it'd be 30, $25 to $30.
That's pretty significant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're talking about nearly 1,000 feet here.
Yeah.
You know, we've got 220 foot down the east side, or down the south side, 220 foot across the bottom, the west side, and then another 220 foot down. So, we're talking nearly 1,000 feet of fence.
Well, let me ask you this. Is there some way in the landscaping of this property that scaling of the fence could be discouraged?
Well, we're gonna be planting red-tipped fatineas, I believe, is what I'm...
How about those things with big old sharp spikes on them, about that long?
Well, the fatineas will grow real dense, and they'll grow up, they'll grow more than six feet high.
Yeah, they'll get up 20 if you let them.
Yeah, and so, I feel like that the fence will be, I mean, we'll put them close enough together where they will form a, kind of a living barrier there to keep it from getting to the fence. I mean, it's gonna be 10-foot of landscaping with red-tipped fatineas there.
Okay. That, that, I think that provides a sufficient barrier. It's not to start with, but it's...
Yeah, it'll take maybe a year. And the red-tipped fatineas grow real fast, and they're very sturdy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Jolly, and then council member Clark?
Okay, with a wooden fence, we have decay. We're gonna have plants there which would need be watered, which would cause decay.
I don't think wooden fences necessarily have to decay, do they? I mean, if you... Well, yeah, I mean, if you put them, are you gonna put them in metal poles? Are you gonna attach them to metal poles? Yeah, see, the, most of the decay comes on what the stuff that's in the ground.
Will they be watered?
Yeah. Well, the plants will be, but all that will affect is the metal pole, the metal pole that's in the ground.
It won't affect the fence up against it? Because my fence gets watered when I water my plants.
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, that will, but I mean, it's...
And then 13 years...
Is this treated? Yeah, it's treated wood.
Mine is also treated, and I've had to replace mine, and this is the second time. Well, I've replaced it once in 13 years.
They'll be required to replace it if it goes bad. I mean, they really will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Clark?
Yes, sir, I have another question for you. You talked about the lighting in the front parking portion of the building. Can you explain the lighting in the back? I assume that the detail you went to in the front, you probably didn't do in the back.
Yes, it will be, it will just be a light that's showing straight down. It'll be hooded, so that it won't be bleeding over into the residential property. It'll come off of the building, and it'll just be very similar to, well, I don't know if there's any on this building or not, but it'll just be attached to the building, and it'll be aiming down, and it'll be hooded, so that it'll just go straight down.
So, if people were back there, they would be very visible with the amount of light you're gonna provide?
Yes, on our property, yes, sir.
If they choose to climb the fence?
Yes, sir, they should be visible.
Thanks, sir.
And they'll be well enough to find your car, and, you know, maybe not read a newspaper, but to get back there, and, you know, you'll be able to see people.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, Mr. Eklund, you have something you want to say or a question to ask?
I'd like to address the issue of the fence. A, fence panels cost between, if you really get a good bargain, and you know just where to go, you can get them for $12 apiece, okay? The same panel, the same size panel, six by eight, can cost you $45 or $50 a panel, okay? Depends on what it's made out of and the style of the panels, okay, and how well it's built. So, I don't know up against, you know, what requirements the council's putting on this. Is he gonna be able to get the cheap panels? And by the way, I've hauled off more panels than I can count, okay? I can assure you that you can't think of, you can't put them on the curb. And they do rot, they do discolor, and they do rot rather quickly. They're not the best material. You know, they're good for privacy, but they're not good for long-lasting looks on property. So, not to put any burden on the businessman, he's building a 6,000-square-foot building, which has to be, I don't know, not my business, but somewhere in the neighborhood of several hundred thousand dollars. I don't see, you know, I just want to make sure that they get a good quality fence near the neighbors and around the development, because we're all gonna enjoy some more discussion in this whole neighborhood pretty soon, and there's a lot of exciting things happening over there. So, we don't want to be looking at this fence falling apart. The maintenance of the trees is important. The fatineas, they do grow very tall. They do make nice bushes if they're planted close enough. And on the other hand, they need to be trimmed, so they look nice. So, you know, you got these two things going against each other. They're gonna cause maintenance for the businessman, and he probably want to make sure they're maintained, which has been a problem sometimes in our other business areas, where we require landscaping, but we don't require them to, you know, really stick to it, and then, you know, they buy a $2 plant, and it dies a, you know, a month later, and we're not happy again. So, we want to make sure that we don't get ourselves in that kind of situation, and we hope that this will be a quality development. So, please consider the fence as an integral part of the boundary between the neighborhood and the business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund. Mr. Watkins?
Bob Watkins, 6140 Bluesbury Circle. I was gonna leave this alone till Mr. Eklund got up. I did speak to the planning and zoning, which I didn't plan to speak then, and I don't plan, didn't plan to speak tonight on this particular item. But as you go up my, up to my house, I live just a block south of Western Center, and see the nice brick walls you've got up there. And then the same thing applies all up and down Western Center. The wooden fences require more often replacement, but it's less expensive to replace them. Plus, when one of those brick walls falls down, you never can make it look like the rest of it. So, I mean, you can, you can, if a panel of a wood fence falls out, and you go buy a brand-new panel, it'll age and everything, and in a few months' time, it'll look like the rest of the fence, the brick and the other masonry. And the type of soil that we've got here in Holton City, you've got a great tendency for these walls to fall down and break apart, and they're, they're not impossible to fix, but they're real expensive to fix, and they don't look good as a good wood fence would.
Do we have anyone else in the audience, since this is a public hearing, to speak on this subject? Mr. Attorney, you have...
Mayor, if I could just address the fence issue. We've had some good comments tonight about the fence issues. I think they're all very legitimate, but all we can do tonight on this matter, being a final plat, is require that the developer adhere to the requirements of the ordinance, and I'm sure the council has given direction to sta- of the ordinance, and I'm sure the council has given direction to staff that they need to make sure that the minimum requirements of the ordinance are adhered to, and if the fence does fall down, I believe we have a maintenance requirement. It does need to be replaced, but as far as revisiting the fence issues and what the minimum standard should be, that's something we should do in the ordinance, and as it exists right now, the developer needs to meet those minimum requirements.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address this subject? Okay, there being none, I will close the public hearing and will now call for a motion from the council regarding this final plat. Councilmember Lanford?
Excuse me, move to approve final plat P. 01304, and make the comment that I understand that that's why we have to sit up here and make these decisions. Sometimes they're not perfect, but we try to make them good for the entire community, and I think on balance that this is... This needs to be approved. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Councilmember Sutton?
That's for a second with concurrence with the comments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments? Okay, there being none, if you will cast your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. Item number 13 is the final of the public hearings, and this is a first reading on the subject. Mr. Pliska?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, citizens of Holton City. This is conditional use permit 005-04, and to conduct the public hearing, consider the application of Mr. Ricky Price on behalf of West Point Venture for a conditional use permit with site plan approval to operate a tunnel car wash on property currently zoned C2 Commercial District on part of Lot 34R, Block 5, Fossil Ridge Edition, Phase 3, located on the east side of North Beet Street and contains approximately 1.02 acres of land. Located in 5300 block of North Beet Street, the site is currently vacant. Adjacent zoning and uses are to the north, C2 Commercial District, which would be the Taco Bueno. South is the northeast Loop 820 Commercial Area. East is, again, the C2 area, which is vacant at this time, and to the west is North Beet Street or Fort Worth. The site is zoned C2 Commercial and does not allow for a car wash on this site without a conditional use permit with site plan approval. The applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to allow for this type of use on the site. There are existing car wash facilities within the general vicinity of the area. The site is designated as a commercial district according to the city's comprehensive land use plan, and would therefore be permitted in conjunction with the plan. At their meeting on the November 23, 2004, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to deny the request for the conditional use permit with site plan approval to the city council, as they felt that it was not the best use for this particular site.
Okay, Mr. Olson, if we could, since this is... Has been denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, if this council wishes to override the recommendation, what kind of vote are we required to have?
Mr. Pliska, we have a requirement in the ordinance, do we not, that it requires a three-quarter vote of the council in order to overturn a decision to denial?
That is correct.
Okay. So what that means is a three-quarter requirement of the entire council. That will take six votes of the council, even though we have one member absent. So tonight, it will take a unanimous vote of the city council, all six of you, to override the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
I just want to be sure everybody understood the options we have. Any questions for Mr. Pliska regarding the information he's just given us from the council? Okay, there being none, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any members in the audience who wishes to address the council regarding the conditional use permit with a site plan for this car wash?
Mayor, I do not see the applicant in the audience, and he has been notified by mail and was notified at the Planning and Zoning Commission of this night.
Okay. We have no one in the audience who wishes to speak on this subject. I'll close the public hearing at this time, and I'm ready to receive a motion regarding item number 13. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we do not approve... Maybe I should move to deny ordinance 0200402915.
Councilmember Hutchison?
That would be a second.
Councilmember Sutton?
The same.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to not approve any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you will cast your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote of the council. We move now to the visitor citizen forum section of our meeting. We have, I believe, two appearance before the council sheets that have been filled out. I want to make my usual statement of, before we do that, this time is set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to speak to the council. All comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to individual council members or staff. Each person must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on this form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. Council cannot discuss or debate an issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it is not posted on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings law. The first of our request forms filled out is by Ms. Conley, Ms. Patricia Conley. If you will come forward, and the subject that you wish to speak to us is utility bills for lower income, and you have six minutes.
My name is Patricia Conley. I reside at 3913 Kirby Street, Holton City. I was before the council and asked them to consider bringing back a... I don't know how you pronounce it, untable it or something, the motion to find out if we could get some people that would help us, people that are on fixed incomes, and I've asked the mayor, I mean, the city manager, and I asked Diane Branson to look into it, and I don't know if they have found out anything. I think the... Mr. Mira told me that they have looked into it some, but they were still looking into some more. I just want to kind of jog your memory and see if I can get you to... Anybody else to look into it also and help me out about getting a set fee for people on fixed incomes on utility bills?
Just for a point of clarity, the only other... There is no other person to look into this.
Yeah, okay.
It is me, me and my staff, and as we talked about during the break, you know, we've done some very preliminary, and I mean very preliminary, working on it. I don't have a timetable. I don't have a particular plan in mind, but we're reviewing it and seeing what we can do.
Well, if you guys don't get too tired of me coming up here, I'm going to keep pushing it through.
That's fine. That's fine.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Conley. Our next speaker is Dolores Taylor. Ms. Taylor, if you will, give us your name and address for the record, and the subject on which you wish to speak according to this form is Barbrook Park, and you have a six-minute time on it.
I'm not drunk. Okay. Name is Dolores Taylor, 636 East Bellknap, Holton City. Okay. Barbrook Park Revisited. Holton City Mayor White, city manager, mayor, and council members...
Ms. Taylor, if you will pull that mic closer. There you go.
Start all over?
There you go. You're doing fine.
Holton City Mayor White, city manager, mayor, and council members have all contributed as a catalyst to action after two decades of procrastination attributed to former mayors and council to finally clear out the overgrown vegetation and debris at Old Barbrook Park next to the historical Virgil Cemetery. Earnest work on the project began November 26, and the crews have worked ever since to correct the landscape of Barbrook Park to include dirt filling the two enormous pools that currently were hazardly uncovered in a potential safety problem, not to mention a lawsuit waiting to happen. Now that the pools are filled and the site no longer a safety and health threat, the area would make a wonderful sanctuary for wildlife and/or park that folks could once again enjoy. Given its real estate of 55 acres, it would also be well-suited for recreational activities and picnic area. The original Barbrook was closed because of a drowning in one of the pools over 20 years ago, and since has been converted by nature as a habitat for coons, skunks, and possums and taken advantage of by humans to utilize as a dump site for discarded appliances and furniture to include vagrants and replete with graffiti artists, along with pot smokers, skateboarders, all with the label of trespassing, as the entrance gate to the park is clearly posted with a warning. Thank you, Mayor White, for your panoramic vision to see and correct this problem, with thanks, of course, extended to those connected to this effort. What a wonderful Christmas present. We don't have to worry about some child from a Ponderosa trailer park wandering off, possibly going into the Barbrook compound and be a victim to falling into one of the pools, since the trailer park is located in front of the entrance to Barbrook. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We move now to the next item on the agenda. That's boards and commissions. We have no resignations, no appointments or reappointments. That takes us then to item number 16, the attendance requirements. Since Councilmember Kim Reese is not here tonight because of an illness, I need a motion regarding the wishes of the council, whether or not to excuse this absence. Councilmember Branson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we excuse the absence tonight of Councilmember Kim Reese.
Councilmember Holcomb?
That was for a second.
Councilmember Hutchison?
Same.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Reese's absence tonight. If you will cast your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote of the council. The council will move at this time into executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code Section 551.071, .072, .074. Any action to be taken by the council will be taken when we come back into open session following the executive session tonight. The time is 9:35.